Welcome to our AMA that Ask Me Anything with Salt Lake City Council members on policing and the Salt Lake City budget. I'm Chris Wharton, the council chair, and with us are council members Amy Fowler and Anna Valdemoros. Ongoing national and community conversations on equity and policing have rightly changed the focus of this year's city budget considerations. There is unprecedented public engagement about racism, policing, and related matters, which has led the council to follow up and review the police budget, the structure, the procedures, and broader policing questions. We're here to talk about all of that today. Our staff is also trapping potential ordinance changes about the Police Civilian Review Board, banning the use of military items, and more data reporting to the council from the Police Department. We're going to start by answering questions from the public that were submitted to us through email prior to the event. Then we'll move on to questions from the Facebook livestream. So please send along your questions below, and we'll try to get through as many of them as possible before we wrap up at 1:00. For questions we're unable to answer in today's event, those will be documented and shared with the rest of the council. We then hope to respond and publish those questions as soon as possible. We're also hoping to have future AMAs on different aspects of equity and policing in Salt Lake City, but today's presentation will focus on the budget first. We've received a lot of questions on that matter, and we're going to, as I said, try to answer as many of those as possible. We will not be answering questions today about the district attorney's ruling yesterday regarding the May 23 officer-involved critical incidents. Our webpage, slccouncil.com, has a statement on that ruling if you'd like to read it. And of course, you're always welcome to reach out to us as council members and to the council office with questions on that issue specifically, and those will be answered, just not during the livestream today. We're also getting questions on a lot of administrative matters, like the Black Lives Matter mural, Police Department policies, and the operations of our new Commission on Racial Equity and Policing. There's one thing that you should know when submitting your questions. Our city government is a two-branch system, and it goes like this. The council handles policy and budget issues. The mayor's office or the administration administer the day-to-day operations of the city, such as the mural and the day-to-day operations of the Police Department or any other department in the city. We have a separation and a balance of power in City Hall between those two branches, and we have to work together to try to do what's best to represent your values as residents of our city. So we can allocate money, for example, to a line item in a department and can speak to our reasoning, for example, the decision to fund for training until we receive feedback from the Commission on Racial Equality and Policing. The administration would determine the internal policies, like who provides the training and how that's administered, and more operational things like that. So this AMA is focused on the new budget, which began July 1st. As we've gone through some of the questions, we have some that relates to the update that the city received regarding our meeting earlier this week on Tuesday. A financial audit to the Salt Lake City Police Department. It's hoped that a company will do the audit, that will do the audit, excuse me, will be brought on board next month with an interim report this fall and a final report by the end of this year. The audit is aimed at helping create building blocks for zero-based budgeting, a tool which could help rebuild the PD budget for the budget year 2021, and can also inform changes for this budget through budget amendments to the 2020 budget. Our staff also is researching best practices and new ideas. We're putting together summaries of all our communities and what they're doing to address implicit bias and systemic racism, particularly as it relates to the city budget. This list is at 300 entries currently with ideas over a very broad spectrum. The council will continue to receive updates and continue to hold discussions on those items, and I hope that you'll stay tuned and continue to engage with us in our upcoming meetings and work sessions. Okay, so with that information, we'll go ahead and start answering questions. So we have a question. The first question is from an email that we received, which is, "What is the Salt Lake City Police Department's total budget for the year?" And I'm going to pass it over to Anna and let her answer that question.
Thank you, Chris. Hi, everybody that is watching. Thank you for joining us. If you are, I hope that this is an educational opportunity to talk about how budget works, specifically to this department. So to answer that question, the total budget for fiscal year 21 starts July 1st of 2020 and ends June 30th of 2021, and we call it fiscal year 21. And that budget for this Police Department, if I'm not mistaken, it's a little over $79 million. Approximately $70 million will go to employee costs, like pay, insurance, and several other millions will go to operations, maintenance, and services.
All right, thank you, Anna. We have another question via email. "When will we get true transparency into how the Police Department spends its money? Presently, looking at the budget, it is one big pie chart that says nothing about allocation." Let's see. Amy, do you want to take that?
Sure. Well, there are many ways to look at a department budget, from the individual transactions, for example, $50 for each new uniform, to ongoing annual expenses, such as $200,000 for vehicle fuel, to the major categories, for example, in our Police Department, which is $70 million for employee compensation. So those are just a couple of hypothetical examples of how we can look at a budget. Every penny of public money is tracked and reported in the city's financial system, which is audited annually for compliance with government standards, and those reports are publicly available. I think one of the other things about transparency and where money is going will come forward with the audit that the City Council has approved the money for, and that, as Chris mentioned earlier, that we will be hoping to put somebody in place next month and have an interim report later this fall.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Another question from an email is, "Will citizen input be allowed for policies and spending measures within the department?" I suppose this relates back to citizen involvement with the committee. So public input is always welcome and is part of the legally required process that city councils have to go through in order to approve and appropriate public money. The council actively seeks input from residents, and staff is always gathering and incorporating what we hear into the council's conversations. A public hearing is required for a new annual budget or for any amendments to the budget that happen throughout the year. So each time those amendments come forward, the public will have an opportunity to make a comment directly to the council in one of our meetings, and they'll also have the ability to contact us individually as council members or contact us through the council office. The best way, if you want to send a comment to all of the council members, is to email council comments at slcgov.com. Also, we've mentioned the Commission on Racial Equity and Policing, and they will make recommendations to the mayor and the council, but ultimately, the council is responsible for deciding which of these recommendations to implement and how to spend public money. And so as those come to the council, those will also require public comment period, and we'll actively seek more public input as those come available. Let's see. Oh, I also want to just mention that as of right now, the council has set aside $2.8 million in the fiscal year 2021 budget to implement some of the commission's recommendations, so that's already waiting, but there could be more changes in the future through budget amendments. Okay, move on to question four. This is from Kamal on Facebook. "Why did the SLCPD lose $5.3 million for doing their job? They're the best unit in the country. We need to make sure that our neighborhood is safe. Can you ensure our safety to at least the same capacity with the budget cut? Please refund them." Anna, I'll go ahead and let you take this one.
Thank you. I think when you look at budgets, you look at the overall system and how much it's costing, and then there are certain spots of money that might not be either being used fully or not as effectively, or it could be repurposed. So that's a little bit of legroom to have. And so one of the reasons why we did that is because we do feel like the safety and quality of life are top priorities for us and the residents. And our cuts during the recent budget were strategically identified to make sure public safety continues uninterrupted. So even if we moved some of this, the service will remain the same. That's what we have committed to do, but we're going to look at part of those millions that we took away to be better implemented, either in the Police Department, if the commission says this is where it needs to go, or in other departments that might fulfill the same, you know, the same goals of public and community investment. So that's why.
Okay, thank you. Our next question comes from an email. "Considering the vociferous and unprecedented number of calls for reducing police funding, why wasn't the council and mayor able to reduce funding for the Police Department and instead increase funding? Was that the council or the mayor's choice, and is budgeting actually out of your hands?" So under Salt Lake City's... Oh, I'm sorry, this is for Amy. Go ahead, Amy.
Sorry, I was muted there. Thank you, Chris. First off, I would say that actually the council did decrease the police funding by about 6%. It was about $5.3 million that we decreased the funding by. And then to the second part of the question of whether or not it's out of our hands, this goes back to something Chris mentioned earlier regarding the two forms of, the two branches, excuse me, of government that we have. The council is charged with creating policies for the money, but we can't really say where each dime goes. That is up to the day-to-day operations of the administration and the department heads. And so it's sort of, it's not that it's out of our hands. Ultimately, we do decide what funding is budgeted or allocated, but at the end of the day, where each of those dollars go is up to the administration. Hopefully, that answers that question.
Yes. Question six is also via email. "Beyond a memorandum of understanding, what legal or contractual power does the police union hold?" So I'll go ahead and answer that. Salt Lake City negotiates with three labor unions, the Police Association, the Firefighters' Association, and APSME, which is the American Federation of County and Municipal Employees. The negotiations are governed by the 2011 collective bargaining agreement, which identifies that we can, or, excuse me, what we can and cannot include as part of our negotiations. Each year, the mayor recommends to the council potential changes based on negotiations. Some years, only wages are negotiated; in other years, other parts of the MOU are negotiated, like in uniforms, or vehicles, or disciplinary procedures, things like that. This year, the negotiations between the police union and the city council hit an impasse, which means that they were unable to reach an agreement between the city and the labor union. So in the event of an impasse, the mayor is required by ordinance to recommend to the council what we should do for that year. This year, because of the impasse, the mayor recommended that the council approve a one-year extension of the existing MOU. The council and administration are reviewing that MOU, and that will be up for renegotiation later this fiscal year. So I do want to state, though, that in terms of the, that Salt Lake City is one of, I think, only two cities that negotiates and recognizes unions, and we do that because we, as a city, believe in collective bargaining and we believe in organized labor. But because we're dealing with three unions, we also have a legal responsibility to negotiate and treat those unions fairly. We can't fundamentally treat one union differently than another, but that doesn't mean that we can't negotiate the terms of the contract. Question seven is another email question. "We've received many questions on requiring more strenuous certification and more training for officers or continuous education." Anna, you want to take that?
So the council, and me as a previous staff member, definitely support the continuing education through funding. We have, the city has a program called the Reimbursement Program. I think all departments, our staff can access that if they wish to go back to college or take other training, you know, to improve their skill set or add skills that they didn't have to their job. And the Police Department definitely makes use of it. We have supported additional trainings of basic requirements of the peace officer standards and training curriculum, so that says a lot about, you know, how much, you know, we want our Police Department staff to be trained. And the council has funded several additional training for this goal. I'm, you know, personally, I think there's more to do there. I think there are other, depending on the issues that we deal with the city, there are training that our Police Department, you know, might find useful when dealing with crime or when dealing with...
Okay, thank you, Anna. Our next question is, "Does the Salt Lake City budget, or, sorry, does Salt Lake City budget for potential police misconduct or brutality settlements?" Amy, you want to take that?
Sure, thank you. Maybe. So there is a governmental immunity fund that is operated. It's a reserve that is managed by the Salt Lake City Attorney's Office. This fund addresses claims that pays for legitimate damage caused by the city and funds the city's legal defense in other litigated matters. Excuse me. I would like to note that the administration recently put out a chart regarding governmental immunity and the different responses that sort of the council has, the mayor has, and then what is kind of out of our jurisdiction, if you will. I would encourage anybody to look at, I believe it's on the administration's website, and if not, contact one of us in the council office, and we can get you that chart, because it does a really good job of explaining the different roles and the process.
Thanks, Amy. This question comes from another email. "My daughter and LCSW has 30-plus years of experience in public and private practice, written special interest in domestic violence, PTSD, and juvenile suicide rates in Utah. What are your plans for incorporating social workers on teams that go out on calls that involve mental illness with policemen, which policemen are not trained to deal with?" So our police officers do receive 40 hours of crisis intervention or CIT training. Of course, that does not make them social workers, but they do have some training in order to be able to deal with that, which is another thing that Salt Lake City has done to try to invest in these, like, alternative solutions that many other cities don't. Salt Lake City Police has been a leader in Utah, actually, for implementing and requiring CIT training. So again, though, we recognize that this is not a replacement for social workers who have additional skills and expertise, which is specialized to address mental health incidents. The council is interested in growing our current social worker program. This would allow extended use of the coresponder model, when a social worker and a police officer jointly respond to the same calls for service. So I, and part of the change that the council did with this last budget was to put the, even though that program operates in conjunction with our Police Department, was we put the funding for that in a non-departmental holding account to ensure that there's no way that that funding could be diminished in any way. And so the council will continue to monitor that and hopefully continue to grow that program. I think most council members, or if not all, are interested in expanding that.
Can I add to that, Chris?
Sure.
And that's something that I think we talked probably last council meeting, or if not, I talked to people and to constituents about, that they have asked. I think it's very important, when we talk about changing systems, we talk, you know, we need to do an evaluation of what, let's say, the Police Department jobs, like, what do they encounter on Salt Lake City streets? Where are they spending more time on? Is it crime, that somebody that it's, you know, camping on a sidewalk, or somebody that's having a mental health crisis? So that data will help us understand, you know, how the Police Department, the officers day-to-day work is, and therefore allocate funds to, let's say, most of their calls are people camping and/or having a mental health, sorry, probably mental health crisis. Well, our officers are trained, but probably need additional support with the social workers or with additional training, so that they can do a better job at addressing the issues that we see every day in our society that are not criminal issues, are, you know, seriously mentally, you know, neighbors sometimes. And so that's the importance, when, at least when I talk about systemic changes, is that to look at where we are spending most of our time and where can we improve and invest so that we have better results.
Thanks, Anna. So question 10 is, "Why hasn't Salt Lake City's budget for indigent defense, the Salt Lake Legal Defenders Association, increased at approximately 80% of the police and prosecution rate? 80% is the rate of cases that are appointed counsel in SLC Justice Court. Right now, the prosecution has a new building, shiny stained glass on Fourth South, it's on Fifth South, and while the LDA rents theirs. While parity between prosecution and defense isn't an exact measure, it is one, especially when the police budget is considered with the prosecution budget." And I'm going to, Anna, if you don't mind, I'm going to have Amy answer this one, since she was a public defender for many years and is now a private defense attorney. So go ahead, Amy.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate this question, and I think that a lot of people wonder why public defenders don't get paid at the same or in equal amount as prosecutors. I would say, in answer to this question, that the majority of the funding for our Public Defender's Office here in Salt Lake County, the LDA, comes from the county. It comes from Salt Lake County. Salt Lake City does contribute some funding to, through our non-departmental budget, excuse me, trying to think of the word there. And so we do contribute to it, and we do do a sort of increase every year as much as we can. Of course, this year, all the departments were asked to have a flat budget due to the COVID crisis, but we do give a nominal increase of funding to the LDA. So really, when we're talking about that funding, that means that's a county issue, and they do the majority of funding for LDA.
And Amy, this, I would, I think also factors into it, and tell me if you agree, that the city prosecutor's office is actually a department of the city. They are city employees, whereas LDA is a private organization, even though they do public work. And so the city has direct control over our employees, whereas like a private association where we provide funding to them, we don't make the decisions about like where they office or what their introductory pay rates are, things like that. That's made by that organization. Is that right?
That's correct. And technically, it's a nonprofit, but it kind of falls in between that semi nonprofit area. But they get funding from both the city and the county, but they are their own separate entity with a board of directors, an executive director, who makes all of the decisions, sort of similar to what we were talking about with the different, the different forms of branches of government that we have. We can give the money, we can't say where the money is going. That's up to the executive director of LDA and how they run their office.
Okay, thanks. Our next question is, "I feel we should collect demographic data on every single police interaction with the public. This data will help hold us accountable on whether the police still disproportionately stop people of color. However, I noticed my driver license doesn't have ethnicity on the card. What's an efficient and non-disruptive way for police to collect that info during an interaction?" Anna, since we skipped over you, do you want to take this question?
Yeah, so our Police Department does collect demographic data for use of force incidents, such as gender, race, ethnicity. However, sometimes unknown is listed. This is a good suggestion. Thank you for that. We do hope the Department, what they've already gathering, what they're already gathering in these interactions, and if they're funding technology, procedure, or other ways to improve collecting of the demographic data. And we also believe in having the data to understand where we are and help us learn whether changes are moving in the right direction. In other words, you know, this data, we want to see the data so that we can see patterns, you know, that might be contributing to, you know, you know, potential, like, racial profiling, but we need to have that data, we need to have good data, and then address those issues and try to, if there's a pattern, why it's happening, how we're going to reverse that, so that, you know, equally.
Thanks, Anna. Okay, a question from Michael on Facebook. "Would the council support full council oversight of the specifics of the police budget or just control over funds for reform?" So I think if we were, if the council were to exercise full control over the police budget, that would probably be a violation of the separation of powers. I think a court would not allow that, because the council would essentially be taking over the role of the mayor and the chief and sort of usurping that. We, with regard to reform and making changes, the council is holding a zero-based budgeting exercise for 2021 that will look at the Police Department budget in further detail, and we can, once we have more visibility from that and more information from that, then we can be more specific in our allocations. So the results of the upcoming audit for the Police Department will inform this exercise. One of the differences between the annual budget process and the zero-bet process is evaluating and justifying every penny in rebuilding the Police Department budget. And so so that's a little bit different than how we typically do budgeting for our departments. So in addition to that, the council has set aside money in three holding accounts for reforms and new investments. This is only part of the overall review and evaluation of the police department budget. In our holding accounts, there's 2.8 million to implement recommendations of the Commission on Racial and Equity in Policing, which I mentioned earlier. And then there's also 1.67 million for investment in underserved communities and people of color. And then 322,800 for training or other recommendations, depending on what the commission deems most appropriate. So we'll, we'll look forward to continuing or to having more control over the police department in the in the future. And there's going to be a lot of increased scrutiny and room to to for us as council members to learn more and for us to bring more transparency to the public as well. But but we, if we were to take over the budgetary operations, that would be like an impermissible delegation of our authority or invasion of the authority of the executive branch. Question 13 is, are you aware of what is happening to the crime rate in cities where the police have been defunded and given no support? We'll go back to our regular rotation, Anna, do you want to take that?
Our staff is monitoring cities, so they're doing research and looking at what's happening and giving us reports as council members. So we, they've been collecting and will keep continue, you know, information on initiated pilot programs or reduced funding to police. And well, obviously, they provide regular reports on those efforts. But I think the council members, not the ones here, but not only the ones here, but the rest of the council is really interested in see how these things work in other cities and if it's a good fit for our city. Some things, you know, every city is different in certain ways. And so we want to make sure that whatever, you know, this commission comes up with and 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 our budget process, it's going to work for our city and for what our constituents want in this majorities, obviously, so we'll see.
Thank you, Anna. Our next question is from Michael on Facebook. Do you think there is a difference between moving money spent on policing out of the police budget and into non-departmental when it's still used to fund the police? Just because there's more oversight, it is still money spent on policing. Amy, do you want to take that question?
Sure, thank you. I appreciate this question because I think that that's what it it looks like, that we just took money from one department, put it in another department in order to spend it back in the police department. However, we took two and a half million dollars from the police budget and put it into the non-departmental for the social work program. We did this to ensure that the social work program continues to operate. If the police department does have to make cuts, we did not want those cuts to be in a very, in what we believe is an integral part of the police department, which is the social work program. We also put money over into the non-departmental to use, as Chris mentioned, to invest in underserved communities and and communities of color. And and we will do that when we have some suggestions from the Commission on Racial Equity in Policing.
So question 15 is from Rhiannon on Facebook. Will your task force include any community protest organizers? If you're not actively defunding the SLC PD, how can we be confident that these conversations are constructive or progressive in nature? Yeah, I think that's a great question. So the the commission right now is looking for a broad range of representation for commission members, including members of the activist community, including young and emerging leaders. What we wanted to do is we wanted to create a core group for this commission and then empower that group to to go out and find the voices that they think are need to be at the table. And it's, but we formed this commission and and we picked the the core leadership that we did because we really want to elevate black and brown voices in particular in our community. But there absolutely will be space at the table with added commissioners with that will represent the activists and and young communities among, among other needs on the council. So we really look forward to seeing a broad range of representation and to have that inform our discussions going forward. In the meantime, I would also mention that Amy and I have met with Decarcerate Utah. I've met with Black Lives Matter leaders. I think multiple people on the council have met with with people from Utahns Against Police Brutality. And we're always willing to continue to meet with these leaders. And so even if, you know, one particular activist group isn't on the council, that doesn't mean that that you that they won't have access to us as commissioner or excuse me, as council members. We have a very open willingness and actually, I would say a desire to meet with these groups and dialogue with them more. Okay, the, are you going to take a poll to see what people want with the police department? Anna, go ahead and ask or answer that.
Okay, so a poll is also, or it's also, you know, a public feedback tool that we have and that we may consider, I think it's been used in the past for other questions. And then polls are helpful to get a snapshot in time of a selection of the population's opinion. But we don't want to assume they represent everybody we represent. So this is why we always encourage encourage people to provide feedback as much as you can, to hear from everybody because to try to hear us, I guess, as from as many people as possible because, you know, we understand that some people are more shy or not accustomed to, you know, to to participating or or things like that. But we feel like it's important that we can get as many voices as possible. So a poll is a way, it's a way to do that. But we, you know, not just, we want to hear from a lot of people. I'm not sure if I answered all of that. And then we have other ways, obviously, for people to provide feedback, which is the public hearings. Email, the public hearings, as you know, is where you can come talk to us. It's not a Q and A like this, we, you know, we're, you know, we're not answering questions, we're listening comments. And we, you can email us comments, which we have and we gather and our staff puts it all together. Not only do we receive the emails, guys, that you send to all of us, but our staff goes, once again, compiles all of them and sends it to us, send it to us again so that we can see it again, make sure that we didn't forget or we didn't read one. So they're really good at that. This AMA event, I think this is the first one we do, Chris, is that? So, you know, if people like it or if we, if people found it educational would like to talk about another department, I I would be willing to do that. I think it's, it's fun that we can answer questions in this format. And then letters and phone calls, texts, all of that, it's it's feedback for us and we appreciate that.
Yeah, I would also say that that from a best use of public money standpoint too, polls are extremely expensive. And if we were to to base all of our department budgets or even just any major issue in the city on, if we had a poll for everyone, like that would be a substantial use of public money. So instead, a lot of times we were, we rely on polls that are done by news agencies or that are done by universities or things like that. And and we use that data in addition to the direct, the direct communication that we as council members have with our constituents. Okay, there's a question from Evan on Facebook. Do you personally believe the police should be allowed military-grade weaponry and technology? So, no, I I do not. I've been on the council for three years, I think, three different times. Proposals have come before us that, since I've been on the council, regarding military equipment. And each time I, and it's been unanimous vote against. So since this is asking personally, like I'll let each one of us answer and then Amy, I'll let you give more detail. Anna, go ahead and just give.
No, that's all.
Amy?
Yeah, this is an easy one, no, I don't. And in fact, based on discussions during the budget, we made a legislative intent to create an ordinance the city could not actually accept or the the police department could not apply for a grant where they were seeking money for any sort of or equipment, any sort of military-grade equipment. So I think we've taken a pretty hard stance on our and a pretty significant stance on our beliefs of whether or not we agree with military weaponry and and technology.
Okay. Next question is from an email. If the police department receives less funding, how will there be enough money to accomplish important goals such as weeding out cops who exhibit racist action, providing training for all cops, attracting more non-racist, well-qualified recruits, and most importantly, having enough police so that calls can actually be responded to? And that's a great question. So the council did not reduce the number of officers that are currently hired and there is no reduction of pay in this budget. And so that includes the, there were two groups of about 25 officers, 50 total, that were funded in the past two years in order to bring our, the number of officers on our force into compliance with like sort of national standards regarding how many officers it takes to be able to respond to emergencies of a city of our size. So so we did not take any of that money away. Money that's originally allocated for training was placed in a holding account pending recommendations from the Commission on Racial Equity in Policing. Our budget for the police department and public safety more broadly will be backed by research and quality equity-oriented recommendations on the best ways to deescalate and overcome bias. So this is going to, we're going to continue to be very intentional and very data-driven with with our changes and with future cuts or reallocations to the department. Question number 19 is again from Evan on Facebook. Do you believe the role of the police has been stretched too thin? Meaning had they had jurisdiction over more than they should? Since, again, this is asking what we personally believe, I'll let each one of us answer quickly and then Anna, you can give more details. I personally believe that we do ask officers to do too much and it's, it's not even so much that their jurisdiction is defined that way. It's that for so many people, calling the police is just the default to any type of disturbance, whether it's regarding criminal activity or not. And so, yeah, so I absolutely believe that we ask police to do way too much. And that's, that's one of the things that's contributed to the problems that we have. Anna?
Thank you, yes, I I agree with you and with with the question asked. I think we we ask a lot of them and we, I don't, we have been talking as a society about our societal issues and how, and we default to the police to take care of certain things. But I don't think we have dig deep enough to understand where societal issues are. In the last 10, 20 years, there are more apparent and that we still don't have, haven't had a good grasp about what it is to, you know, to be suffering for a mental, from severe mental health issue versus being a criminal, being with, you know, with an illness, if you will, with, you know, with the drug, drug addiction problem that folks may have. And we've asked the police department to take care of all of that. And that's where, that's where we need to go back to our system to look at the data, where is our police department spending? And then in addressing those issues with with different skill sets. And that's where we need to invest and help our police department if that's what they would like to, you know, to do, you know, to 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 help their labor every day, there, there are people out there and the officers dealing with this issues. So one of the issues, right? And then we just talked about racial stuff and that's, that's another set of, another dataset that we need to evaluate as well.
Amy, do you want to give your your personal response to that?
I would just echo what has been said by the two of you. I think that we, we certainly ask our communities, ask police officers to do a lot of things that are outside of what we originally have them there for, right? So I would just echo the the things that you guys have said.
Okay, thanks, Amy.
One more thing, Chris, sorry to that. And I, and I think Salt Lake City has been leader in trying to address those issues that some people may see as homelessness, as, you know, housing, affordable housing issues that can lead, if somebody loses their house, you know, homeless can lead to other more serious issues. And so we've also been trying to tackle those societal problems that we have in different ways. I think that we're a good time to revisit, to to review and see what else can we do to improve, whether it be the police department or other, et cetera, so.
Okay. Next question is from Hillary Ann on Facebook. You actively seek comment, why do you not follow through? It may be worth posting archive recordings of the weekly meetings demonstrating the hundreds of comments made requesting defunding of SLC PD. Amy, you want to take that one?
Sure, thank you for that question. I would want to say that all of our meetings are recorded and you can find past meetings on our famous YouTube channel. Okay, it's probably not that famous, but it is on YouTube at SLC Live Meetings. And we welcome every one of the comments that we've heard over the past several weeks. And we continue to engage in conversations with community members, with leaders of the different activist groups in order that we can make significant changes that are being asked for.
And then there's also an archive of our records, I think, on our website, so. Okay. Next question is from an email. I'm curious what you think will happen by defunding law enforcement? Better community or higher crime? I would bet on the latter. So our goal is not to to try to take money and and make people feel less secure while making people that don't feel secure more secure. Our goal is to have a more secure, a more broad feeling of security among all of the different groups in our city. Our goal is more justice, more equity and and a system where people feel safe. We haven't defunded the police department and we're committed to making sure that funds that we, that go to the department drive those goals. So it's, it's a goal shift. Under state law, Salt Lake City is required to provide policing services through a police department headed by a police chief. So Salt Lake City could never defund entirely or abolish the Salt Lake City Police without a change in the state law enacted by the state legislature. So we, we have to act within the confines of the law and and that is one of the, one of the major laws that legal requirements of our police department. Okay, question from Ruth on Facebook. Can you explain how a cut to the budget, excuse me, a cut to the budget will have an effect on response call times? Go ahead, Anna.
The 5.3 million dollar cut to the fiscal year '21, the police department budget, did not reduce the number of police officers. reduce the number of police officers. And in recent years, the police department implemented a return to the model of beat policing, where an officer stays in a specific geographic areas, beat, gets to know the residents and local issues in that neighborhood. This is an important part of community-oriented policing. The department increased the number of officers in the patrol bureau who are out in the field, in the neighborhoods, and responding to calls for service. Let me see information about that. Response times are a function of the number of calls for service and the number of available patrol officers. So not all calls for service are the same. Some take hours to handle and be a quick 15-minute response. Response times vary day to day. The police department and 911 dispatch monitor response times. So for priority one, for priority one calls involving the most serious and violent crimes, ideally a 911 is supposed to elope in responses within six minutes. I can give more details on that and we can probably post it somewhere on how it works. But that's one of the, one of the things that is when you call 801-799-3000, which is our non-emergency call line, they tell you, if this is an emergency or, you know, a very serious crime happening, please call 911. If not, they will answer, you know, your phone call right away and, and you can, and you can submit a complaint there and, and they will send somebody to, to look at it when they can. Thanks.
Okay, let's see. Question 23 is from Hillary on Facebook. What percentage of the city budget is spent on police? Amy, do you want to take that?
Sure. Approximately 24% of the city's general fund budget is in the police department. And notably, the general fund of the city does not include departments like the airport, the library, or the redevelopment agency. They have their own separate budgets that are outside of that general fund budget.
And just something I want to add here, a question that we've gotten a lot that I haven't seen come in today is why the police department budget jumped so high in recent years? And I, I, I think it's just really important to note here that the major, the biggest reason why you saw a, a big change in the budget number was that, I think, last year, Salt Lake used to have two police departments. We had our Salt Lake City Police Department and then we had our Salt Lake City Airport Police Department. We combined those two into one department. And so even though it did, we didn't increase spending or anything on policing, it was the same, we just took the money out of airports and put it in police department. And so that, I think, created the perception among many that we made a huge increase to our department when really we just merged two departments that existed and maintained all of the same employees. The other major increase to the police department over the last five years was adding the social worker program. So I think that it's important for, for people to know that.
Yeah, great. And yeah, add something to that. Sometimes when, when the city decides to merge certain departments like this, it's a, it has to do a lot with HR, call issues that running a program does. Sometimes it doesn't make sense to have two HR departments for basically the same service. And that's why you merge them and that's why, you know, the funds merge and then they look, and all that stuff. But it's, it's about the system and the logistics of it and how to operate it in terms of HR, in terms of, I don't know, every day-to-day service, et cetera. So there's a lot of things that implicate that and maybe, you know, simple, sometimes it's not as simple to understand once you dig into, into it. Like you're like, oh, you should see the big number and it's just not, it's not that simple. But this will make it more efficient, I guess. That's the hope.
Thanks, Anna. Let's see. Question from William. Can you provide a written link to the recommendations, please? Wait, whose, whose turn is it? Is it my turn? I think it's mine. Okay. If this is in reference to the New Commission on Racial Equity and Policing, that's a brand new commission, they're, they're still gaining membership, so they haven't issued any recommendations yet. Once they have recommendations to provide to the council, those will be made publicly available and discussed in our open meetings. And we're really looking forward to receiving that. So we're gonna, we're going to push that out and promote that a lot, once we, once we have those recommendations. Next question is Hillary Ann on Facebook. Could you say more about how rebuilding the police budget coincides with defunding the police budget per consistent demands in June? Anna?
It doesn't necessarily coincide. What we're trying, rebuilding the police department back from zero doesn't mean rebuilding to the same dollar amount for the, for the same purposes. Rather, the zero, but zero-based budgeting exercise is a way to align the priorities of the community and elected officials, which is the council and the mayor, with all spending in the police department. Salt could be shifting some ongoing funding to new purposes, which may or may not be within the police department. Similarly, some existing funding could be shrunk or expanded. I hope that makes sense. I think we talked earlier about the shifting, reusing some of those funds for that, that we have, or other issues that we need to solve. So obviously still providing, you know, the same service, level of service of public safety and Salt Lake City want as well.
And Chris, can I add something real quick?
Yeah, of course.
I just also want to reiterate something that you said earlier, Chris. By state law, we have to have a police department. What we're trying to do is, through this zero-based budgeting, is to have a police department that aligns with the priorities of our communities. And, and that's the goal there. We can't get away from what the state tells us to do, but we can certainly do it the very best way that we can.
Thanks, Amy. Okay, so we'll take one final question because we're, we're getting close to one o'clock. So let's see.
I think that was the last.
Oh, that was the last question, sorry. And we only have three minutes left, so, okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for joining us. We really believe our residents are calling on us to address racism and systemic inequality in Salt Lake City and we want to hear, we hear you and we, we want to respond to those calls and we will respond to those calls. We started this budget process with a review of police budgeting policy and future practices. It does not end there. We are going to continue to work in collaboration with the mayor's office, with the public, with the Commission on Racial Equity and Policing. And this will be an ongoing and widening process as we work to root out inequality in, in Salt Lake City and build a more equitable and just society for all of our residents. Thank you so much for tuning in. And again, we hope to have more of these in the future and we hope that you'll join us for those as well. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.